Start now. All right, it's seven o'clock. Good evening, everybody. We'd like to call this meeting to order, the Planning Commission of Thursday, April thirteenth, two thousand and three, and ask you to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, please be seated. Thank you. And then this will bring us to the administration of the oath.
So. So, um, you guys can stand there if you'd like. You have a copy of the open oath in front of you. So I will read it and you will repeat after me, um, after I just state your name and then follow the, um. Follow the script after. The execution of this oath is required by the Constitution of the State of California. I.
I.
Christian Caesar Martinez.
Oliver Vares.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
Uh, will support and defend.
Support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation.
That I will take this obligation.
Freely.
Freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Okay, thank you. So if you can take the pen, um, in front of you and sign. I will keep this one to switch, sorry, I'm missing this one.
Thank you. Okay, congratulations, Commissioner Martinez. And. Oliver Vares?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliver Vares.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so next what we'll do is, um, do a roll call of the new commission.
Okay. So we have Vice Chair Henderson.
Here.
Commissioners Elise.
Here.
Commissioners Luhann. He is absent tonight. We make a motion to excuse his absence.
A motion to excuse his absence. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
I'm sorry, who called this second?
Mateo.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
And Commissioner Oliver Vares.
Here.
Okay, next we're gonna, um, call for a motion to select the, uh, Planning Commission Chair.
Motion to select, uh, Planning Commission Chair.
As?
As. Dean Henderson.
Oh, thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so next, um, we need a motion for Planning Commission Vice Chair. I move to, um, appoint Vice Chair to Commissioner Elise.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
All right, that is done. Okay, and that, um, so we have, the motion passes with four yes votes, votes. Okay, it's on to item number six, waiver of the full reading of the resolutions of ordinances. Who would like to make a motion to waive the full reading?
Motion to waive the full reading.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes with four yes votes. Okay, so we're on to item number seven, review of the agenda. Ms. Magagna, do we have any changes to our agenda?
No, we do not.
Very good, thank you. Next item is the consent calendar. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting of March ninth?
Motion to approve the last minutes of the meeting from March nine.
I will second that, since I was there. And I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Um, four yes votes, motion passes, okay. Now, the next item on the agenda is appointments. So we have a public arts commission in the city of Palmdale, and it's a pretty cool commission. Um, we, we installed, I forget what we called that, kind of globe chromey thing over in the, in the auto, auto center, but we had a beautiful sculpture in the auto center. Are you?
It's called Revolution.
Revolution.
I'm gonna do a little presentation.
Okay.
If you're ready for it.
Yes, yes, please, come up. If you're doing the presentation, so that we can make the appointment for the Public Art Commission, and then when you're done with that, um, while you guys are, um, contemplating, one of you can be a proud new member of this commission. If you're.
If you're so excited.
I'll see.
Hello, Commissioners, uh, congratulations on your appointment and in some cases reappointment to the Planning Commission. My name is George Davis. I'm the Public Art Program Manager for the City of Palmdale. And as, uh, Chair Henderson mentioned, I'm here to recruit one of you. Uh, per our bylaws, the Public Art Commission consists of seven members with a range of professional credentials, mostly in the arts. Uh, at least two of the seven voting members shall be professional artists. Two of the seven voting members shall be design professionals, and at least one of the voting members, uh, shall be a member of the Planning Commission. Our previous planning commissioner, uh, Commissioner, uh, Christina Fragasines was involved with, uh, several projects, including Revolution, uh, as well as the, the adoption of, uh, all of our administr- administrative procedures and policies, including the adoption of the bylaws, the, um, municipal public art guidelines, the mural policy and guidelines, the public art guidelines for developers, temporary artwork policy, the deaccession policy, and recommendation to City Council of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three Public Art Work Plan. So every year we put together a five-year work plan, and it consists of projects, uh, mostly for the following fiscal year that, uh, we then, after the Public Art Commission approves it, it goes to City Council for approval and it gets, uh, built into our budget. Um, and she was also reviewing the draft for the next fiscal year, um, uh, Public Art Work Plan, which is, uh, going to council next week. Uh, the completed public art projects approved include the kinetic sculpture at Rancho Vista Park, uh, Animal Valley Walls in coordination with the City of Lancaster, where we installed, uh, four murals throughout Palmdale, and Revolution, the sculpture Chair Henderson was talking about at the, at the Auto Mall, uh, which is really, really cool, dynamic, uh, piece of artwork. Uh, we're really lucky to have that. Uh, Commissioner Fragasines also asked us to look at refreshing the crosswalks at Drytown. Uh, we have a, an installation there called Piece Together, where we invited volunteers to paint the crosswalks in, in rainbow colors, and we did that, uh, a little over two years ago. And, uh, we did it, uh, initially at Drytown, and we did it also at Best of the West at Marie Curran Park. Um, the, the crosswalks at Drytown have kind of deteriorated at a faster rate than the ones at Best of the West, so she recommended that we take a look at that and, and refresh them. We're gonna, uh, we're gonna be doing that, uh, on May thirteenth of this year, uh, right before the opening of the park. She was involved with reviewing the project approach for, uh, plenty of murals at the Palmdale Library, which is still pending, and the Palmdale themed mural at Chimbole Cultural Center, which is on hold until we figure out what's happening with that building. As well as the artist selection process for the upcoming waste minimization theme mural that's gonna happen across the street from the Palmdale Transportation Center. Uh, we have a, a paint collection event, uh, scheduled for April twenty-ninth, so they'll be, they'll be, uh, uh, starting the mural right before that and painting during the event. Uh, so it kind of adds a, a little depth to that kind of programming, uh, and we'll get a, a brand new mural, so it's pretty fantastic. Uh, public art projects that would be coming before the Public Art Commission in the coming fiscal year, pending council approval next week, include, uh, a mural at the Palmdale Amphitheater. It's an entertainment themed mural, uh, within the grounds, so that people that are there for concerts, events can have a, a nice, uh, backdrop of an entertainment mural there. Uh, temporary artwork for Kaleidoscope, so every year we've tried to, eh, include, uh, well, starting last year, uh, uh, include a, a public art component at, at Kaleidoscope as we expand the event. Uh, last year we had, we had chalk artists, we had, um, uh, living vines, uh, stilt walkers, which was really interesting. Uh, we had, uh, artists paint on cellophane that was wrapped between two trees. It had a, a floating shark out there. You could see it from, uh, Rancho Vista Boulevard. It was really, really kind of cool. Um, so we're continuing that. Um, a sculpture for an upcoming roundabout at Avenue S eight and Fortieth Street, which is right next to Drytown. Uh, antelopes on parade. If you've been to our rec centers, there are painted antelopes there by artists. There's also, there are also two of them in the development, development services lobby. And those were commissioned by local artists. We, we, we purchased the sculptures and we do a little, uh, recruitment artist selection process where we select artists to, to paint those in an original fashion. Um, a small mentor mural program. Um, one of the goals of the program is to involve local artists as much as we can. So, um, what we're gonna do with this program is we're gonna select, uh, three, uh, freshman artists that have never painted murals, and we'll team them up with a muralist, an experienced muralist, and we'll have, uh, three new small murals in town, so it's kind of a training process to get them, uh, get their feet wet and get them to understand the process of planning, the design and implementation of the mural. Um, we're gonna have a very large, uh, mural painted on the Palmdale Playhouse as it faces Tenth Street East. We've got, uh, currently, there are traffic calming roundabouts being installed that was approved by this commission, uh, uh, on that street. And so with that, and, uh, we'll, we'll have a mural installed in the Palmdale Playhouse that stretches, and if you're familiar with the, the Playhouse, it has a very long curved wall, so that would take up all that, all that space facing Tenth Street East. Uh, we have a Palmdale Cares mural on that street. We have a, a mural inside, of course, on Pool. And in the coming years, and the next, I think it starts in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, they're gonna renovate, uh, Corson Park, and that's gonna have a, a public art sculpture in it as well. So that whole stretch, um, will be transformed in the, in a matter of two, two and a half years. Um, Samuel and Park Phase Two has a potential art element going into it as well. Um, for, the ordinance requires that we set aside one percent of that budget, uh, for public art, so we'll determine, um, how much of that gets used in the park and how much of that get just, um, deposited into the public art fund for future projects somewhere, uh, in another, another part of the city. And then, of course, uh, as we do every year, we would review the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five Public Art Work Plan. And just to take a little snippet from our, our Public Art Master Plan, uh, Public Art in Palmdale has the power to express Palmdale's identity through the built environment, to elevate the role of the artists and the creative, and the creative process plays in connecting people in place, provide equitable access to a diversity of artists and artistic experiences, encourage multidisciplinary collaboration in the public and private sectors to create vibrant public spaces, and most importantly, probably, is to celebrate our community's multicultural assets, highlighting the unique character of our neighborhoods, honoring their histories and preserving the quality of space. So the Public Art Commission plays a similar role to the Planning Commission in, in the sense that they review and approve projects, uh, in our community, which shape how our community develops and, and the feel that we're creating in the streets of Palmdale. Uh, public art helps shape public spaces, harnessing the ideas and assets of the people who use it. This is formerly known in public art as placemaking. Our meetings are held on the fourth Tuesday of every month at five-thirty. They generally don't last more than an hour, um, and, and are usually done within forty-five minutes. Our next meeting is on May twenty-third of, uh, this year. And that's all I have. Any questions for me?
So, um, where does the funding for these, all these art projects come from? Does the city pay for it or to get grants?
The city pays for it, but the funding comes from, uh, our ordinance that requires development projects to contribute one-half percent of their, uh, billing permit application to public art. And for municipal projects, we contribute one percent of, uh, the CIP construction car, uh, cost to public art.
Oh, cool. So you already mentioned, um, the commitment from a new member would be about an hour meeting, once a month on a Tuesday.
Once every two months.
Oh, two months. Once every two months.
Yeah.
Um, at, uh, five-thirty, once every two months.
In this chamber. Just not too bad.
Anybody, uh, able to?
Um.
Do you have? Christian? Christian?
Yeah, I'll join the committee.
Oh, that'd be fantastic. That'd be fantastic.
So you just need one?
Just need one.
Okay.
At the moment, un- unless you're all jumping at the bit to.
Okay, all right, Christian, cool.
You got me on a, uh. On Tuesday at five, five, five-thirty or something like that. And I was like, that's a pretty, like, that's a pretty tight for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'm.
Great.
Jumped the chance.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so what, what upcoming projects do you have going on right now?
Right now, we have a, a mural that's being painted, uh, at the Palmdale Transportation Center, uh, that's happening later this month. Um, we, we recently installed the sculpture at the Auto Mall. So we're kind of moving forward into this next, uh, fiscal year. Uh, like I said, I have a couple of projects that are on hold, um, at the library and at Chimbole. Chimbole is kind of, it's gonna be on hold for a while, I would imagine, 'cause, um, they're, we're trying to re-envision what happens within that space and how that space is used. And, um, the engineer and architect that come in may, may develop it in such a way that impacts the wall that we had designated for that. Um, so the funds have been earmarked for that and set aside, but we just don't know what's gonna happen. So, and the other project that I have going on right now is, uh, a project that we do every year. It's called the Walk on Words Poetry Contest. Uh, this year, the theme is Sister Cities. We have a relationship with Ponce de Talán, Mexico, and we've had that since the seventies. So we decided to take the opportunity to, to create a contest, uh, that honors that relationship. And, um, in order to truly do that, we felt the best way to do it was to have it be in Spanish. Um, and we've got a lot of Spanish-speaking resident, residents, so, um, that's what's going on right at the moment.
So you guys are really busy. You got a lot of, a lot of stuff going at one time. I mean, how, how long has it taken you to get to this point? We have so many projects going.
Well, I started at the end of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, the Public Art Master Plan was adopted, uh, I wanna say that, uh, that November. And, uh, the following year, we adopted the ordinance. Um, so we've been building steadily since that point. Uh, uh, the, the, the contributions started, went into effect, uh, in July of two thousand and twenty um, for private development projects, and, and as soon as, as soon as we adopted the ordinance, they went into effect for municipal projects. So, um, we also had some seed money deposited, uh, by the city manager at the time, so that we can get the project, uh, we can get projects going without having to wait for those contributions to start coming in. Um, so we really haven't slowed down. I mean, as soon as, as soon as we adopted the ordinance, um, we started planning for the, the sculpture at the Auto Mall. Um, 'cause that's a project that takes, uh, some time to develop and fabricate. It took about a year from, uh, contract to have the piece installed, and there was, there was about six months going into that, that we were, um, going through the artist selection process.
Well, it's beautiful. It's a new selfie location for people to go take pictures and something that the city can be very proud of, and I'm sure you have more projects that we're gonna be very proud of too, so.
Uh, oh, so, and, uh, uh, Commissioner Martinez is gonna be the first one to hear about it, so.
All right. Sweet.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great presentation.
I have one more question for you. Um, do you guys have any running themes or anything like that? So like you say, this year we're doing, you know, uh, we're going in the spring. You might have something that's, you know, spring-ish, you know, as in like, you know, leaves or, you know, you have kids playing or anything like that, or is it just that you guys already have these set projects?
No, so, so, um, in developing the Public Art Master Plan, uh, we had a lot of, uh, built-in community engagement events. And, uh, the themes that were, that were weaned out of that process included, uh, all the things that, that local residents really kind of love about the Animal Valley, the open sky, the, the, the desert landscapes, Joshua trees, poppies, ravens, all that kind of stuff, aerospace. So all that stuff is stuff that we're, we're slowly trying to weave in to the process in some cases, uh, and it's a project-by-project basis. In some cases, it just doesn't fit. Um, for example, the, the Auto, the Auto Mall sculpture, since it was a collaboration with the dealers there, um, they kind of requested an auto theme. Um, so the, the piece is called Revolutions, which is a, a, a reference to revolutions per minute. And it's round like a wheel. It's got a finish like chrome, and it's got, if you look at it in the center, it's got a hex shape, which is reminiscent of hex bolts and stuff like that. Um, but there's a piece on the outside of the library facing, uh, Sierra Highway that's made out of mosaic tile, and that has a Joshua tree in it. It has, uh, a black raven sitting on it. Um, so the themes are, are kind of developed by project, but they're also, uh, in overarching, we're trying to fit in the themes that were developed, that were, um, uh, presented through the community engagement efforts and the Public Art Master Plan.
Thank you very much.
Actually, I have one question.
Of course.
Are we also thinking about adding lighting to these sculptures? So like the Auto Mall, adding LED lights to change it with the different seasons, with the different, um, events we're having?
So, that's, that's a really good question. The, the public art portion of that sculpture only addressed the sculpture. So it didn't sur- address any of the surrounding areas. Um, economic development, uh, discussed, uh, refinishing that roundabout, which was previously used to park cars on it, had grass on it, it was not really well-kept. Uh, and, uh, the artist, uh, designed, uh, a pattern on there that, that looks really cool from satellite imagery. So if you look down, it looks like that the sculpture just rolled up on the top of the hill and it created these waves. And so that was done with DG, and they did add lighting, but, uh, the lighting is, uh, to be honest, not, not great. Um, so that's something that, um, is a discussion to be had. Um, it's, it's, any, any project, um, of that nature, while it certainly impacts the public art and is part of the presentation, it's not, it's not part of the artist's fee, so we can't really, we can't really build that in. So that's more of a CIP project moving forward.
Something for Public Art Commissioner Martinez to work on.
Okay, yeah. Exactly, exactly, yeah. Something you can bring up at the, at the next meeting.
All right.
Any other questions?
We're done. I think we're done. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it, and, and thank you, Commissioner Martinez. We'll be looking forward to seeing you at the meetings.
So, thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
So, um, do we need to vote, or is just somebody, um? Just an appointment. Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Commissioner Martinez. Commissioner Martinez, you're a double commissioner now. Okay, so we're on to item number ten and ten A is Brown Act Training. Oh, our attorney is changing positions.
I will try to keep it short and sweet and not boring, but you know, it is what it is. So. Um, this is a training on the Brown Act, so we'll just jump into it. So. The Brown Act stems from constitutional protections of the people's right of access to information that was approved by the voters under Prop fifty-nine in November two thousand four. And it's a part of the California Constitution. So and this also includes the Public Records Act. But essentially, it's that the people have a right to open government, that meetings have to take place open openly and. They can't take place in secret and the people insist re- on remaining informed. And that they don't designate the authority to the decision, the legislative bodies to essentially. Make decisions without their input. So that's. And all meetings, including this one, have to comply with the Brown Act. So it implies to local agency legislative bodies. So that can be your city council, your planning commission, your committee, advisory boards. Um, and there's, I won't get into all the nuances of what constitutes a legislative body. But essentially, if there are two or more persons from. An already established legislative legislative body and then other, like, say, staff members on it. That also turns into another legislative body. And so say there was some sort of like housing committee. That to those people too would have to comply with the Brown Act. And so. What that means is that the meeting has to be open. And there has to be notice of it, which we'll get into more as the slides progress. But a meeting is considered a congregation of a majority of the members of a legislative body at the same time and location. Including if they're on a remote location like Zoom. Um, to hear, discuss, deliberate, or act on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Which I'm going to call the people's business, cause that's a mouthful and you don't want to hear me say it over and over. So the goal is to limit though discussions of anything that is important to the people to open meetings like we're in right now. So that there is no secret, sneaky dealings that the people don't know about. And so these are the things that are specifically not a meeting from the Brown Act. Um, so individual contacts. So if, say, a towns person comes up to you and tells you something. About a project or just their opinion on something, that's not a meeting. That's at. The rest of these things apply if, say, all of you were at a community meeting, a meeting of a government agency. My wedding, meetings of standing committees, or giving grand jury testimony, those don't count as meetings. So. For example, if I were to get married and invited all of you, we would not have to notice that as a public meeting, even though you're all there. So this is where it gets a little dicey as to what is a serial meeting. So you cannot use other people to figure out. As basically an intermediary to figure out how somebody else feels on a topic ma- on a subject matter. So what I think of this is like, I don't know if you ever played the game of telephone. In elementary school where like one person says something and then you say it down the line, you can't do that. So if Commissioner Martinez said, told. Chair Henderson, you know, I'm gonna vote this way on a certain item. And then Chair Henderson told Commissioner Oliveras and it worked its way down. You can't do that. That's a serial meeting. You can't tell other people, more than one person, how you feel about a sub- uh about something. Um, and the same works with staff. So you couldn't tell Brenda, you know, I'm gonna vote this way. And then Brenda can't go and tell somebody else how you are going to vote on some on another matter. Um, so other examples are in-person contacts among a majority. And a majority i- in this case of this body would be three. So only two people can discuss something, three people cannot. Otherwise, it's a meeting and it has to be. Open and have a notice and an agenda. And technological contacts among a majority and then contacts through other people, um which I just discussed. So. You can talk to an employee or another official um in separate conversations. To answer questions or provide information, so long as no communication about about the comments or positions of another member of the legislative body. Is revealed during the course of that communication. And also there, I have a slide for questions, so if something doesn't make sense, you can ask at the end. Um, there are specific rules for social media, which is are that um. You can engage in separate conversations on social media to answer questions, provide information, or solicit info from the public. But you guys can't talk to each other on social media about the people's business. And if someone, say, Commissioner Martinez, posts his thoughts on the art or something like that. Another commissioner cannot um comment on it or like it or share it or anything. You can't interact with each other on social media. About the people's business. Correct. Right, it, yeah, it's it's specifically in the Brown Act that um it's new. Yeah, yeah, so even if, I mean, how this usually comes up is it's not so nice. It's um. One person is talking ill about another person's opinion and then the other person gets mad because they can't comment on it. So if uh Chair Henderson goes, you know, and is saying. Something that he doesn't like about somebody else's opinion or direction that something is moving, but you know. Vice Chair Elise is very passionate about it and loves it. You can't comment on his post and say, you know. Stop talking about me or, you know, what um in it specifically in the Brown Act, it's new. Um. And of course, you can't, a majority of members can't talk amongst themselves um on social media about the people's business. But you can, you can have your own social media platform and talk to the public about specific things, just not to each other. Okay, so this is notice and agenda requirements. So regular meetings like this one require seventy-two hours. Notice and posting of the agenda, the time and location of the meeting, a brief general description of the business to be discussed. And you can't talk about what's not on the agenda, except um we didn't have it today because no one's here, but. There's, say, there's an um open public comments at the beginning and someone gets up and brings up something that's not on the agenda. You can briefly respond to provide information or to maybe ask staff, hey, can you, do you have information on this that you can give them? But it has to be a brief response and it it's very limited in the discussion. You can't have like a whole open. Conversation about it if it's not agendized. Um, special meetings require twenty-four hours notice and emergency meetings require one hour. And these are remote meetings, so this was new due to COVID. Um, but and it's kind of weird, but they, an agenda must, so say someone is on Zoom. And they're in Palm Springs. Um, the agenda must specify each teleconferencing location. So if somebody is away. The agenda has to say where they're located and the agenda has to be posted at that location. Um, and a quorum has to be present within the jurisdiction of Palmdale. Um, but like two people could be remote. So and then those two remote locations have to be accessible to the public. And I'll just illustrate this in a very, in an example. Um, city council meeting, one guy is away on a business trip and staying at a hotel. Well, so he can use this this exception. He can still appear at the meeting remotely. But he has to go into, we had him go into a public space at the hotel. They had to post the agenda outside like on the window that you, you know, this is where the meeting's taking place. And the public had to have access to it. So kind of weird. Um, but we, you can do it. So he, you know, did his thing within this room and. I don't think anyone showed up, but just to comply with the Brown Act, that's how it works. Um, and the public has to be able to address the body as a physically presence, so either they can zoom in or, you know. That's why it has to be open to the public so that, I guess, if a person wanted to wander into that space, they could attend there with him. Um, weird. I think it's weird. And so within the Brown Act and um this constitutional right to to the people's business, the public has a right to comment. And they have a right to speak at legislative meetings. The agenda must provide an opportunity for the public to speak on any item of interest to the public, which is usually the open comment section. And then on any item on the agenda um before or during the item is considered, which. As you'll get more familiar as you go through the meetings, that's how all of these are set up, is that you have public comment at the beginning and then. Typically, when there's an actual like CUP or variance or something on there. You'll say after the sta- the staff presents, you open up for public comment and then the people get up and they talk and then close public comment. Um. And but so there are some restrictions that the city can impose on public comment, so it's not just a giant free-for-all. And people aren't just like speaking into space, which is why we require speakers card and you can impose a reasonable time restriction for each speaker just so that everyone can speak. Um, which is typically three to five minutes, which I believe here it's three minutes. And there are, this is, I guess, where it gets kind of interesting. If people are disorderly. Or cause a disturbance, they can be ejected from the public meeting. However, it has to, there is a. Fine line because they do have this right to speak and then also First Amendment protection. So the person has to be so disruptive that the meeting just cannot proceed in their presence and then you can kick them out of the meeting. Uh, very rare, but it does happen. Um, and you can put limit, you cannot put limitations on viewpoint. Um, so say someone gets up here and they say, I hate the city attorney. She sucks. She's horrible. You know, I disagree, but they have their right to speak. So just about, you can't like they, the public is allowed to comment and say things even if they. You know, are not how we feel or they could be unkind, but they're allowed to speak on it. Um. However, if people get too far off on tangents and they start talking about things that are really not on the agenda, you can interject and say, you know, hey. Please stay on topic and, you know, you're kind of going off into the weeds here. And the public also has a right to access documents. So the um agendas and documents distributed to the legislative body for discussion at a public meeting are public records. So anything that comes here, the public has a right to access either before or after the meeting. Um, documents received less than seventy-two hours before the meeting. Must be available to the public for inspection at the same time the documents are distributed to the quorum. So. For example, say, sometimes we get letters in from people on certain items. And they'll be provided to you at the meeting. Staff will have copies for them for the public because they have a right to access them. So anything that's given to you, the people also get. Um, and this also includes written communications received from the public by you guys. So say someone. This happens, a towns person sends their feelings about a certain project and they send it to all of you. Well, you would have to let staff know or myself that you received this communication so that they can disclose it at the meeting to everyone. Um, because it's a communication received seventy-two hours before the meeting. Um, and say I had printed out PowerPoints and given them to everyone. Then um I would have had to have them available for public inspection too, which is. If anyone wants this riveting PowerPoint, you can get, ask for it and it will be provided to you or and the public. Um. But I did not bring copies. Um, so and then if somebody else brings. Documents to distribute during the meeting, they must be made available after the meeting to the public. Any questions? Yeah. That's fair. Yeah. Alright, thank you.
We took a whole class, just like what, a couple of weeks ago or something like that?
Oh, you did? Okay, perfect. Alright, well, if you never have any.
Brown Act one oh one, one oh two.
Yeah, if you ever have any questions, you can ask me. Um, and if you want this really cool PowerPoint, you can have it too. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, now we are on to item ten B. Crime prevention through environmental design training.
Good evening. Chair, Vice Chair, and welcome new commissioners. My name is Carrie German. I'm the Public Safety Supervisor. We're gonna be covering uh crime prevention through environmental design or more affectionately known as SEPTED. Um, so this is a great starting point, especially for our new commissioners uh who are coming on board and wondering why. Public safety makes some of the comments that we do uh during the planning stages of of buildings and and that type of thing. This is just a very brief overview of the concept of SEPTED. Um, it is not a SEPTED training. If you really want that, you can go through the eighty-some hours that I've gone through. Um, oh, since uh two thousand and nineteen to become a uh certified SEPTED practitioner, but I think you're gonna be pretty happy with this alone, so. So a little bit about uh the definition of of what SEPTED is. Um, it's it's some some theories of law enforcement officers, architects, city planners, uh resident volunteers. How a group can come together um from the community to decide what's right for the community ju- right from the start. SEPTED is a goal to prevent crime by designing a physical environment that positively influences human behavior. So we're trying to design out the the bad behaviors from the get-go. The proper design and effective use of the built environment can lead to a reduction in the fear and incidence of crime and to an improvement. In quality of life. So we're hoping to generate those positive activities. Um, rather than attracting some of those negative activities, whether it's to a park, um other city facilities or are just our community in general. A little history of SEPTED, this is my where it might get a little boring for you. So. Um, Elizabeth Wood, uh she's the one that is kind of the backbone of this, but she wasn't necessarily recognized for it. But her guidelines, um which were technically never implemented, but kind of started the conversation. Um, in regards to the concept of SEPTED. Uh, architect Oscar Newman and created the concept of defensible space. Um, and then developed further by criminologist uh C. Ray Jeffrey, who he's the one that actually coined the term uh SEPTED. And then with growing interest in the SEPTED concept, that's where uh of natural surveillance, access, control, and territoriality came into play. Um, I'm sure many of you, if not all of you, have heard about the broken windows theory. Uh, which was uh James Q, uh James Q Wilson and George Kelling back in nineteen eighty-two, that they explored the impact of. The unmaintained environment and one broken window leads to another broken window. And then how did the SEPTED strategies come into play with this? Uh, so access, control, territoriality, um and then the broken window uh principle. Talked about the neglected zones that invite crime. So when there isn't the uh the positive activity and there isn't the 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 maintenance and things like that. Uh, it turn, it tends to uh lead to crime when there's no visible ownership of of an area. The broken windows theory goes hand in hand with SEPTED. Um, crime is attracted to areas that are not taken care of or abandoned. SEPTED adds a pride of ownership feeling to the community. With no more broken windows in certain neighborhoods, crime will continue to decline and eventually fall out completely. We can all hope. Um, but this is, this is a stop. Deputy Miles, uh the our 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 PAC, our Partners Against Crime uh team, they're all gonna go through this train, so. Maybe you don't have to show up for that because now you're here getting it. So. Um, our our code enforcement, neighborhood compliance, uh we're working on getting the uh the city council trained on this, the housing division. Uh, they've all gone through or are gonna be going through this as well. Um, so how does SEPTED work? Um, it works by decreasing a criminal's ability to commit the crime. And increasing the chances that the crime will be seen by legitimate citizens. Goes beyond the traditional security methods by naturally integrating security measures into the community. So SEPTED is not about cameras. And building walls and re- you know, restricting access and and all of that. It's more about doing things. Uh, somewhat organically, if you will. Crime decreases if the opportunity to commit the crime is reduced or eliminated and then by increasing the sense of security in settings where people live and work. It encourages people to take control of the areas and assume a role of leadership. This is not anything that can be done. Just like we talk about law enforcement can't do 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 it on their own. That's why we um we have our neighborhood watch programs. We have our business watch programs. We have our. Our uh our multifamily crime prevention programs because it's not all about law enforcement. We all have to be involved. So the four elements of SEPTED, we have natural surveillance, access control, territorial reinforcement or territoriality, and maintenance. So natural surveillance, um it's naturally occurring. It's what we do on a regular basis. As we're driving out of our neighborhoods in the. As we're driving out of our neighborhoods in the morning and we're looking around, seeing what's going on. When we come back home, as we're pulling into a parking lot, as we're driving into a park, as we're out doing our shopping. What are we, what are we, what are we noticing? Um some of the things are the way that we make that um in natural surveillance possible is trimming large trees. And shrubs to ensure that no tree branches are below six feet and no shrubs are above two feet. We call it the the two foot six to uh two foot, six foot rule, so no tree canopy should be below six feet. And then no shrubs should be above two feet because that prevents people from hiding behind them and and that type of thing. Install see-through fencing wherever possible, we encourage uh the use of wrought iron. Um and things like that rather than block walls and solid fencing because you can't see out. Law enforcement, your neighbors walking by, they can't see in as well. Uh sufficient lighting, lighting is always huge, criminals don't like to be seen. Homes designed with porches, windows and living spaces at the front of of a home. So people, when they're doing their normal activities, maybe they can't get out of the house, but at least they can see what's going on in their front yards. Uh buildings with large windows and unobstructed views. And um encourage activities that bring more people and observers to potential crime areas. Uh George had talked about uh Corson Park doing the renovations. So we're trying to what we call activate the entire park. So that there is some type of activity that's going on everywhere within the park. So that there's no abandoned corners where the shenanigans can start going on and things like that. So when you bring these type of positive activities, it it kinda pushes out that negative element. So here's some examples of of great natural surveillance. You this, we're gonna talk all about commercial industrials, so a lot of windows. Landscaping is to a minimum, you could see out in, you know, from from every window, you don't have trees or bushes blocking. We have a retail center where you can see the windows are free of signage and we'll get into that a little bit later as well. It's a well-lit front, you can see into and you can see out of each one of those buildings. We have a distribution center, not a lot of windows there, but you can see that it's extremely well-lit. And then the area where you would have individuals, it's it's kind of hard to, I don't know if this has a little, does this have a pointing on it or no? Okay, so if you'll notice in the middle of that, uh middle of that uh distribution center. You can see an area that is all windows and then that's where people would be able to have that natural surveillance point. And you can see that that protrudes a little bit outside of the 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 building. So that whoever's in that area is able to look completely around. And then you have another industrial um or commercial area where again. Uh landscaping is not is not interfering with the lighting or the ability to see into or out of of those windows. When you're talking about a multifamily situation, you can see that all of these units are very well situated to sit. Where you can see all of the common grounds. You don't have a tot lot that's pushed to the very back of a project to where nobody can see it unless they actually walk back there. Uh so this is, this is natural surveillance um with with all of these common areas and all it takes is basically the way the units were designed. Um it's not asking for people to put in cameras to watch it, anything like that, you're sitting out on your balcony and you're gonna be able to see what's going on. Single-family homes, uh so we talked about porches. Every one of those homes, those the that robe homes has porches to bring to bring um activities outside and to bring eyes onto the street. Uh these other three homes are specifically in the city of Palmdale, but the one at the top right, you can see they have a little seating area out there. Where they can sit and watch what's going on. Uh the home at the bottom left, um it does have fencing, but it is see-through fencing, so they're able to um to um. Have territorial reinforcement, but yet they can still see everything that's going on. And then we have another home that too has the outside um living space to bring uh to bring eyes on to the to the street. See-through fencing, uh we have an apartment complex that has the wrought iron through it, we have a commercial or industrial. Again, you can see in in through it, you can see what type of activities are happening. So deputies driving around the corner, anybody walking their dogs, they're able to see it. Uh just a generic house, again with uh territorial reinforcement with the fencing, but you can still see everything. And then the bottom right is actually me sitting on a bench, a picnic bench. At Dominic Masari Park, looking into our skate park, so you can see directly into the skate park, you can see the individuals over to the right. That are actually utilizing the skate park and then they're able to see everything as well. So this allows for parents to be able to see what their kids are doing and then we know skate parks, shenanigans happen there. Um so again, they know that they're being watched. And please, if you have any questions as I'm 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 going on, I'll just keep going. That fencing has been up there the entire time. Yeah, because we used to have, yeah, we we it it actually used to be that you had to have a pass and everything. To be even to be allowed into the skate park, so yes. And you'll notice another thing about the the design of that fencing around there. It's called a guardian style and it actually keeps, the way it's designed, you can see. The the upper part of the 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 wrought iron is kind of uh shaped out. Keeps people from from climbing over and that type of thing, so. And then this is not natural surveillance. We have no windows, we have no observation, we have nothing looking out, nobody can see what's going on 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 those sides. Um we don't know what's going on and these are just random uh random um examples that I gave. But this is actually a apartment complex in the city of Palmdale, they did a great job with the see-through fencing. But you can see the way that the building was designed many, many years ago. That there is that, there are no windows looking out into onto the street or even into the that that common open area. Um that is behind the fence as well. So as some examples of good and poor natural surveillance, so we have a fast food restaurant. No signage in the window, everybody can see out, the the landscaping is is kept low. That's good, landscaping is low over here on this side too, but you can see the signage covers almost the entire windows. This is not in the city of Palmdale, the city of Palmdale does have an ordinance that prohibits anything more than twenty-five percent window coverage. Um so to to help aid in that that natural surveillance. Again, natural surveillance, good, poor, this home, um you can see everything that's going on. Who knows what's going on on the and behind that and those people have no idea what's what's going on 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 the outside of there. Our own uh civic center area, so this is our development services building, you can see the the landscaping is kept below the windows. Large windows that are at a perfect eye level, you're sitting at your desk, you can be looking out, seeing what happens. And this is our old courthouse or Arrow Institute. That even though the the shrubbery is down that 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 tree, once um it's it's all leafed up again and in the spring. Might block some of those windows, but it's not gonna really matter because those windows are so high. That you would need to actually step on a step stool or a ladder to be able to see out of them. So they do provide some light into the building, but they are so high uh that you can't look out without assistance. This is a mu- uh multifamily housing laundry room, so you can clearly see what's going in, it's one clear shot. Large glass doors, you can see everything that's going on in there. This is another laundry room where, does anybody have any idea what's going on in that building? It it is, the reason I can tell you it's a laundry room, it's because this is an apartment complex here within the city of Palmdale. And and so even when the door is open, which it was when I was there today. You still can only see what little section is in like as you pass by, but other than that, you have no idea what's going on in there. And I could tell you stories about the stories that we hear about the things that go on in laundry rooms, but that's a, that's a different topic. Good and poor, now these are basically the exact same designed complexes. You have two stories, you have a balcony area and then you have you have um outside stairwells. These stairwells you can see are somewhat enclosed, so you don't have a clear sight. So you really can't see who's going up and down those stairwells as you can in the first picture. You can also see where the balconies are, they put a solid surface around there, so there's not clear visibility out. Somebody could be laying down there, um you know deputies come in, they're looking for somebody, they would have no idea if they were laying down there. Someplace like this, you can clearly see everything that's going on, so it's just little tweaks that that would make a a big difference. Mobile homes, almost the exact same unit setup, everything is is pretty much the same. But then you have that giant juniper going on right there, where you can't see anything in the front of the house. You can also see that where there are porches, it's it's pretty much covered, so there's not a lot of visibility in. And they have oh not a lot of visibility out to see what's going on in the in their park. Access control, the physical guidance of people coming and going from a space. Um and this does not necessarily mean we're forcing you to go through a gate or 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 that type of thing. So you clearly define entrances and exits, security fencing gates, and we'll talk about hostile vegetation. Um but we want to make sure that we remember to also consider natural surveillance and territorial reinforcement. When we're talking about access control. And then psychological barriers such as paving textures, natural strips and signs. So here are some examples of access control, we've got some hardcore access control that we see in the first two pictures. Um but then you can see where we've, where there's access control as well, but still allows, you know, the free movement. You can see where the skyscrapers are, there is plenty of access control for bicycles, scooters and pedestrians. But it's limited the availability for vehicles to to go through there. Um saying directly below it, that's right here between our cultural center and our finance department. That limits the uh the accessibility of what can actually go in and out through there. We have the um the beach, uh it's limited the access to probably co- you know. To probably protect those dunes that are on either side so that people aren't constantly walking through there, we're directing them to this path to get to the beach. And then again, not no fencing, no gates or anything like that, but you're directing people to how you want them to enter the property. Rather than tromping through the 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 landscape or what have you, you're kind of forcing them to go up into up into that area. Not such good access control. Um so some of them, they did, they did, you know, a a decent job, the one in the lower middle. That can prevent probably vehicles from driving through, but anything else is is going to to get through there as well. Um this has prevented the access from a ramp, so vehicles or carts or anything, they would probably prevent that. The other ones, can't really speak of, I mean, you can climb up to that next stair. That one, again, you could, I prevent, you know, carts or something on that 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 path. Um and then the same, the same down here. Um there was a method to their madness, we may not be able to understand it, but um hopefully it's working for them. Natural access control using hostile vegetation or barrier plants. Uh vegetation with thorns, spines can be used for natural access control. Uh using vegetation for natural access control is cost-efficient a way uh to uh to um um promote crime prevention. Uh when used for a tool for problem solving and not as an independent intervention, this was some, this would be like a stopgap measure or a fill-in. Ornamental vegetation with thorns or uh spines is a deterrent and will help intruders stay away from vulnerable areas. Improve the appearance of the area and also provide natural access control. One of the things that we recommend uh for um especially in multifamily housing. That they use barrier plantings under the first floor windows that they're going to use, um if they're going to have landscaping there. Excuse me. Here are some examples of of uh barrier planting or hostile vegetation, you have the cactus wall. You have some holly with the berries, a little prickling, not too fun. They've used that below the windows at that home and they've also used it to accentuate the wall here at this, the home at the bottom left. Um you've got some yucca there in the middle and then you've got a little cactus garden and I'm pretty sure. Most burglars are not gonna traipse through that to try to break into that to that window. And then these are some of the the plants that would typically be used here in in the Antelope Valley, they do relatively well uh up here. And they do have, you like, you can see the spikes on the fuchsia, on the holly, we all know about the thorns of rose bushes, cacti everywhere. Uh boganvelia, uh but see, these are some of the things that you'll normally see as preventative measures. So a little bit of humor for you. Territorial reinforcement, it creates a clear delineation of space that separates your space from non-legitimate users. Uh defines public and private space. Uh landscaping can be uh a designation of where the that private and 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 public uh line is drawn. Uh design pathways, gates or signs to emphasize the difference between spaces. Um but then again, we want to make sure that we are cognizant of the natural surveillance and ass- access control elements. When when we're uh doing physical elements such as as fencing and a type of fencing. So here's some territorial reinforcement, uh you're not seeing a lot of gates, fences or or anything like that as barriers. Um up there, you can see where the the curved sidewalk, you know, is is pretty distinctive and and designates where. The public sidewalk and then the the home begins. A sign, obviously, you can see these units in the top right, uh large open space, but then you can see the difference in. That's, let's not try to say that word again. You can see the different landscaping that goes through there that that delineates that public and private. A beach area, we've all probably been on a beach boardwalk with with houses right there, you kind of know where not, you shouldn't be going, that's not your your place to be. Um designating the restaurant space from the uh pedestrian right of way and then a golf course. Uh you have the cart path, that kind of helps with that and then you can see that the the landscaping is a little bit different as you get closer to those private homes. Maintenance, a well-maintained area sends a message that people notice and care about what is happening in the area. Um this is one of the 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 easiest things that we can do as far as as SEPTED application. And it directly ties into the broken windows theory. One broken window will entice vandals to break another and then a vandalized area then becomes more inviting uh to higher levels of crime. A property should be well-maintained as a matter of safety as well as pride. So here's some examples, none of these are Palmdale thankfully. So you've got broken window, two broken windows and now you've got graffiti. Homes, we understand that, you know, this home was obviously um a a result of fire. But when those homes are allowed to sit like that for periods of time where it's obvious that there's no activity going on, there's no restoration. People see that as vacant, they start vandalizing, they start taking advantage of the vacant home and then it just progressively becomes worse. I'm sure that that, all of that trash was not dumped at the same time, that this was an accumulation of, somebody did it and then somebody else did it and then somebody else did it. The graffiti on the windows, um not only is it a crime and vandalism, it prohibits uh uh the ability to effectively look out from the building. And to look into it. We talk about access control, something as simple as as repairing uh that fence panel. Now, as you, they've allowed it to to bend a little bit more and become even more damaged. Um and you reduce the ability to control on the access there. And then the weeds here, they did a great job with the see-through fencing and the territorial reinforcement, but. That doesn't help when you have four feet of weeds and you can't see what's going on on the effe- on the street or from from the house. So defensive or hostile architecture, it sounds like a very scary phrase. Um but it's an urban design trend in which public spaces are constructed or altered to discourage people from using them in a way not intended by the owner. Um so this you would think would be most applicable when it comes to issues with the unhoused. And people uh setting up in areas that that they that they should not be. So it uses elements of the built environment to purposely guide or restrict behavior. Um and then we just talked about this, it often targets people who use or rely on public space more than others. Such as youth and homeless people by restricting the physical behaviors that they can engage in, so this is kind of a hot button topic. Um because that you were gonna give me a a law thing in there and I was like. Um but it is kind of a hot button topic, um because there is, there's um an element that is trying to defend against. Uh these measures being put in in place. Um so these are some examples of defensive or hostile architecture. Um to eliminate the ability for people to comfortably lay out flat, you've got some decorative benches that have some different elevations. Um you have a um a bus bench or a uh. Uh bus outlet where instead of sitting flat, you're leaning up against it. The what you'll see down here, the bottom two, you'll see those um brackets on both the um the the steel railing and the concrete. You'll see those most often as a deterrent for skateboarders because they like to grind on those and it often damages the 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 concrete. Um or in impacts people that are trying to utilize the railings appropriately. And then just a divided bench, um simply reducing it to single seating than rather than one flat bench. You get a little bit more extreme here, um some of it can be very decorative, you have some faux cacti here. Um the different sized balls, uh the metal balls, uh you have, they've gone a little extra, they put up, they put up the railing. And obviously that didn't, that wasn't working for them, so then they put some concrete uh triangles in there to keep people from from being in there. And then those are some added architectural elements to the area. And then those are some added architectural elements to, to the area up at the top right. And then you get a little bit, a little bit more aggressive uh, with the, with the pointy, uh, the pointies there. This is our very own city library and George had, I talked a little bit about the mosaic that's on the west facing side of the building. Um, that's kind of where this started from. Well, actually, we had been talking about this for quite a while because it has become very attractive to people to sleep there during the day. Not use it as you would, bring a book, sit down, read or what have you, but to set up shop. This was, has been recently put into place when the mosaic was, was put into place. This was not here, it is now, and, and I'm sorry I didn't take a picture of the mosaic with this now. Um, but somebody did get up to the mosaic and start pulling out, the mosaic has little seashells and other things in it. Um, they took nail polish and started doing their own design to it and then they were prying things out of the mosaic as well. So this is hopefully going to prevent that from happening. You can see the decorative iron there. But then just directly behind it, if you see, you can see the little steel. Uh, triangles there that would prevent somebody from getting back in there and, and comfortably laying down behind, behind the um, the decorative iron. This is our own cultural center, uh, so this was taken a few years ago. And we, as we are all know, because based on what happened to the cultural center. It's been um, a very attractive area for, for the homeless and they would get up to this top floor and sometimes break in. Ultimately, we did have somebody break in and that's where the fire came from. Um, and it was very difficult to secure. Uh, so we, uh, I shouldn't say we, but our, our maintenance team, they add uh, this architectural design. To prevent people from being able to climb over and get into that secured area. So now all sides have the, that architectural. And it is, if you get up close to it, it's, you're not, nobody wants to put their hands there, so. Not all designs are foolproof, so you see at the top left and then you see the creativity at uh, the bottom left. Of how they, of how they got their way around it. One of the benches that you saw earlier and you've got somebody skateboarding on it. Uh, you, you can see that those um, those uh, barriers to make that single seating were added. And he's obviously found a way to get around that. Top right is obviously a statement um, about how it can be, how it can be um, the, the way around that. And then the bottom one, that one was really big in the SEPTED community when it started, when it first went up. But it's coin operated, so to get the spikes to go down, you have to put the coin, you have to pay. And then when the coin, when it comes back up, you either obviously get off or you put more money into it. So somebody jokingly said that that could be a revenue generator for the city, but I don't think anybody's gonna go for, go for that. So beyond the attraction of being cost effective in lowering the incidence of crime, SEPTED typically, typically reduces the overall costs. Of preventing crime, retrofitting an existing environment to meet SEPTED can sometimes be costly. But when incorporated in the original design phase of the facility planning, the costs in designing uh, to SEPTED principles are often lower than with traditional approaches. So we're talking about if we can get in there and provide those comments during the build and design stage of a project. We can eliminate the need to go back in and, and try to retrofit like you saw with the hostile architecture and things like that. And then again, we're not talking about cameras either. Um, so this is how do we, how do we deter the crime and the unwanted behaviors without a bunch of cameras. And a bunch of this and a bunch of that out there, so operational costs are often lower. Um, SEPTED lighting designs can significantly lower energy use and adding to the attraction of SEPTED is that it lowers liability. And our city attorney will tell us all about how that's a good thing. And with that, I offer you um. Try to answer any questions that you may have, any comments that you may have?
So what, what are we doing about um, uh, you said let natural landscaping as a deterrent? Uh, but we do have uh. Property owners that aren't maintaining their property and we have a lot of dumping, so how do you get around that?
Well, we have our fantastic code enforcement team, um, that is, is diligently working to address those issues. We are kind of in um, uh, I don't wanna say an unusual uh, state where we have so much open space. Um, it, I, I don't think that that particularly means that we're more susceptible. If you've driven down, I came back from LAX a couple of weeks ago and there's no open space there. There sure is a lot, a lot of trash or what have you. So um, so when, for the existing properties that they're out of compliance with landscape and things like that. We don't allow them to go back and put in lawns and things like that. Uh, they're required to do zero escaping and that's where we suggest, we have a, we have a um, suggested plant list. That is based on what survives here best. Um, it's, we encourage them to use those kind of plantings to, again, it, it gives them that sense of, of, of territorial reinforcement. But yet is, is now compliant with, with our standards. The illegal dumping and things like that, I know our code enforcement team tries to address that as soon as possible, so it doesn't turn into the corner that you saw up there. Um, one of the, some of the, the, the um, the uh, barriers that they run into. Is that we just can't go onto a piece of property and clean it up, we have to get the, the property owner involved. Sometimes finding them can be a little bit difficult because we have a lot of, of, of um, out of area landowners. So they work very diligently to try to get the landowner into compliance. Um, and then work with that landowner to, to abate the problem and then uh, apply, you know, put up the proper fencing. Or not fencing, but signage and, and get a letter of agency on file so that the sheriff's department and code enforcement can address those issues as they arise. Um, because they can now act as an agent of, of the property owners. So we're doing everything that we can, um, there's, uh, we have a lot of restrictions when it comes to addressing um, the, the unhoused. And how we address them and things like that, so because it's absolutely not illegal to be uh, uh, unhoused. But it's the behaviors that will sometimes come from that, that, that we will address um, as they come forward and as we deem necessary. So when we do find those areas where we, where um, we know that the built environment has become attractive to them. Um, it, it offers some kind of, you know, barrier from the wind or from the elements and things like that. Now we're kind of going back and saying, what could we do here, what could we put here? So that we don't make this a nice little cozy cubby, um, to try to prevent those issues from coming, coming forward. When we have uh, um, developers that are coming through, we look at the design of the building. If you have cutouts and alcoves and things like that that are easier for people to hide or set up or whatever. We're suggesting that you bring the building all the way to the front and that you add, you add um, additional lighting and architectural features. That will, that will deter people from wanting to, hardening in the target, that's what we call it in neighborhood watch, business watch. We want them to look at this and say, yeah, I don't wanna set up shop here or, you know, set up my bag here or my, you know, what have you. I'm gonna go someplace else and hopefully we, we do such a good job with that, that, that it becomes more and more unattractive. To the negative element and we reduce those incidents here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Okay, that brings us to public comments. Do we have any public to comment? Oh, okay, uh, do we have any public hearings? Okay, staff communications.
So I'd like to point out that you received a memo with a tentative agenda for the May eleventh planning commission meeting. So um, go ahead and review that and that will be on your agenda tentatively for May eleventh.
Okay, do we have any planning commissioner communications?
Uh, yes, we do, uh, we want to look at, take a look at uh, trace plan, can we have the staff take a look at trace? Thank you, appreciate that.
What are we, what are we looking at?
Trackland Brewing, um, what's going on is, um, there's been disturbance.
Oh.
Yes, uh, some of the neighbors are saying that there has been uh, disturbance coming from the, um, particular business, so we just wanna see what's going on over there, that's it.
Oh, gotcha, so it'd be um, our uh. Uh, what do we call our law enforcement part of the city, the?
Code enforcement.
Well, it's um, public safety.
Public safety, yeah.
Public safety.
Yeah.
Is gonna look into that and they look at the CUP or something like that.
Yeah.
Make sure that it's in compliance.
Yeah.
Okay, any other planning commissioner communications? All right, then I guess we will adjourn to the meeting of Thursday, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. At seven o'clock here in the council chambers.